Welcome to the May 1st meeting, County Commissioners. I'll stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) To defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our invocation tonight, I would like to take a moment to remember all of the that we have lost. It has been a rough month in April. We've lost community members, and many of us have lost friends that we were close to. Let's take a moment to remember what we have lost and remember with hope all the blessings that we have. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bicard would like to take a moment of personal privilege-
Yes ma'am.
...and honor the lives of Erica and Harmony Smith and Keith and Whitmore, who are tragically gunned down in a horrific murder-suicide. And I would like everyone to take a moment to think about those lives and search your own selves, and if you know anyone that is being threatened, harassed by domestic violence, to please go to the Family Justice Center.
Thank you. Okay. Ethics reminder. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty obligated to all applicable laws requiring official action to uphold the integrity, the independence of the office, to avoid improprieties in the existence of official duties, to the faithful performance of duties to the office, and to the conduct and welfare of governing body in its open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda to outcome in which has a direct, substantial, or reliable financial impact on any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract becoming before the Board tonight? There being none, the Board members have the duty and obligation to vote. Consent agenda. Anybody want to bring that forward?
No, I don't see anything. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
First and second. Commissioner Whiteside first, Mr. Frost second. Would we have a vote?
(inaudible)
Let's vote.
Say all that's in favor.
Say all that's in favor. Say aye.
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 Not opposed. We're getting through here. Proclaim Motorcycle Awareness Month. Jody Martin took accept. Robert Presley is going to give it.
Proclamation of the Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas Asheville and Buncombe County motorcyclists have banded together to actively promote a more positive image of motorcyclists, promote fair motorcycle legislation, and ensure motorcyclists' freedom; and whereas, these motorcyclists are also working to eliminate prodigial attitude toward motorcyclists and promote participation in public service programs; and whereas, these motorcyclists organize and participate motorcycle safety, education, riders' training program, and public awareness program; and whereas, the Buncombe County Chapter of the Concerned Bikers Association of North Carolina has requested that the month of May be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month; and whereas, this Board feels it is in best interest of all citizens to promote motorcycle safety awareness and to foster the sense of brotherhood and sisterhood among all users of our county roadways. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as followed, that the month of May 2018 be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month. That all citizens of Buncombe County are hereby encouraged to join area motorcyclists in an effort to improve traffic safety, increase motorcycle awareness, and that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this the first day of May 2018 by Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, signed by Vice Chairman Mike Fryer.
Want to say anything?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to say that that little fin there is the one that we want to say thank you, because we want to make a point that when you see a motorcycle rider out there, a motorcycle, you may have a full-face helmet, you can't see his face, his big leather jacket and boots, and sometimes they look like a space alien coming down the road. But I want everybody to remember that underneath all that is a regular human being, a regular guy, who's got, somebody's waiting for that person to come home that evening. And so, give them just a little bit of extra attention, just a little bit of extra space, and we'd all make it home safe at night. Thank you very much.
Next would be Jack Thompson Preservation Society. Mr. Al Whiteside will be presenting. Commissioner Whiteside.
This one's easy for me, because I've followed the Preservation Society for a number of years, and we appreciate the job, what you do here in the community, and continue to do. And I'll read our proclamation. County of Buncombe proclamation of May as Preservation Month. Whereas, historic preservation gives residents of Buncombe County a deeper understanding of our diverse heritage and a greater appreciation of our unique history and natural resources; and whereas, historic preservation provides a tangible connection to our history by preserving a part of our environment as a vessel for the story of our past; and whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, creating economic opportunities, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas, Preservation Month provides an opportunity for citizens of all ages and backgrounds to maintain, preserve, and celebrate our country, our county, and our nation's rich history; and whereas, Preservation Month is sponsored by the Preservation Society of Asheville and Buncombe County, a local nonprofit membership organization celebrating its 42nd anniversary of promoting historic preservation in Asheville. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: First, that the month of May 2018 be proclaimed Preservation Month in Buncombe County. Second, that this Board does hereby call upon our citizens to recognize and participate in this special observance. And third, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this first day of May 2018, Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe, by Mike Frye, Vice Chairman. And thank you for what you do. Who's going to speak?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jack Thompson, and I'm the Executive Director of the Preservation Society of Asheville and Buncombe County. I want to thank you for this recognition and for your support of our colleague organization, the Asheville and Buncombe County Historic Resources Commission. I know that they have come up in your recent budget considerations, and I think even today on your agenda, you are considering a Board appointment to that important volunteer organization. Since 1971, our nation has celebrated the importance and power of historic preservation annually in the month of May. And for a century and a half, this dynamic movement has worked to balance progress and a constantly evolving American vision with the importance of recognizing the building blocks of our society represented by our built environment. From mansions to slave dwellings, from towering spires to battlefields, historic preservation reminds us that the past is indeed prologue. Much like the recipe from Grandma that, when made, reminds us of her and her lessons for us, historic places are our tangible connection to our past. When our children walk the halls of Asheville High School, they can be taught the lesson of the civil rights protests at the then Lee Edwards High School, and then go out and create history themselves. I have often said, and will continue to say, that our downtown is a history museum with sidewalks. Even in this frenetic development frenzy our city is in today, is it really that hard to look around and think of Asheville in the 1920s boom? Likewise, our fields, our coves, our hollers, as Granny would say, bear witness to our past with farmhouses, barns, and hedgerows built by our family members that came before us. We are certainly dependent on our strong tourist economy, and we have been for over a century. And we must remember why. It is because we are a special place that tells a story, a place that tells a story with our farms, our historic neighborhoods, and a semblage of historic buildings both grand and modest. These are the modest century-old places that we must pay attention to, as they are the glue that binds the Jackson Building to the Grove Arcade, discreet neighborhoods like Jackson Park tie Montford to Beaver Lake, and legacies of Black Mountain, Sandy Mush, and Fairview that create the identity of our Buncombe County today. Historic preservation is the ultimate recycling, making the greenest house or building the one that is already built and has been in service for decades. With preservation, the energy represented by this history can continue to be sustainable instead of ending up in a landfill. So join the Preservation Society today in our effort to protect and preserve our home. Just a couple of quick notes. On May 10th, we're having a family fun event over at Grove Park. It's called Croquet in May, so we invite everybody to come out and join the food trucks for that fun event. There will be instruction from a two-time national champion croquet player who lives out in Black Mountains coming into town for us. On May 24th, at the Asheville Masonic Temple, we will be presenting the 39th Annual Griffin Awards for Historic Preservation, of which I would remind, the county has received several, most recently for your rehabilitation of the Register of Deeds building. Prior to that, the beautiful mezzanine in our courthouse. Thanks again so much for your time today and for this recognition.
Okay, we've got one more that was added. On May the 3rd, it's going to be National Day of Prayer. Mr. Belcher's going to read it.
Since we don't have anybody here to receive it, I'm going to read it, and Vice Chair might also take a point of personal privilege before I read it, if that's okay with you?
Yes.
So, as the Vice Chair has mentioned, as Commissioner Frost has mentioned, the need for prayer for families. I would add one. Many people in our community know of Pastor Ralph Sexton at Trinity Baptist Church. His wife, Muzette, had her home going and lost her battle with cancer, and that church has such many people in the community, so we would request your prayer for that church and for the many needs, as the Commissioners have mentioned tonight. So it's appropriate that we read this. For, May 3rd is the National Day of Prayer, County of Buncombe proclamation. Whereas, the first National Day of Prayer can be traced back to 1775, when the Continental Congress allotted a daily prayer while they were forming the new nation; and whereas, on April 17th, 1952, the official National Day of Prayer was passed by Congress and was signed into law by President Harry Truman; and whereas, in 1988, President Reagan signed into law the establishment of the first Thursday of the month of May each year as a national observance of the National Day of Prayer. Whereas, the National Day of Prayer provides an opportunity for citizens to join together in prayer and acknowledge their faith and beliefs, and now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows, that May 3rd, 2018, be and is hereby proclaimed National Day of Prayer in Buncombe County, that observance of this day be commended to our citizens, whatever their faith, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this first day of May, signed by Vice Chair Mike Fryer. Vice Chair, I appreciate your opportunity to read that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have that out of the way, but we head to some new business, which is the State of Airport Preservation. Lou, if you may come up and speak to that. There'll be no actions be needed on this tonight.
Mr. Vice Chair Fryer, and the rest of the Buncombe County Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening, to give you the update of the airport over the last year. Some of the highlights that we have, we have passed out our annual report of activities. You received electronically, and I provided some hard copies earlier this evening. From an air service standpoint, we continued with four major airlines. We had a Legion at 31% of our market share, American Airlines at 23% of our market share, Delta at 29% of our market share, and United at 17% of our market share. We also, in late last spring, we added Elite Airways Flying Non-Stop Service to Vero Beach from Asheville. We have 11 non-stop destinations, includes Newark, LaGuardia, New York, Chicago, Charlotte, Atlanta, Baltimore, Fort Lauderdale, Sanford, Orlando, St. Petersburg, Punta Gorda, Florida, and, as I mentioned just a moment ago, Vero Beach, Florida. Our passengers for 2017 was up 15.7% for a total of 956,634. We do expect to reach a million passengers this year in '18. Our seats on airplanes were up 16.7% for a total of 587,148 seats out of the airport. The largest increase in seats was United, with an 87% increase over what they had last year. From an operational standpoint, we had, the airline operations were up 15% for 18,820, and general aviation and military pretty much stayed flat at 47,530 operations. From a construction standpoint, we began Phase 4 of the airfield reconfiguration project, and we're hoping to finish that up this year. We completed our parking garage, which included electrical vehicle chargers for some of the community that uses electrical vehicles. And we also awarded a contract for a terminal assessment study that looks at the expansion of the terminal as our growth continues. From a community standpoint, what we've been able to provide, just to name a few, Wings for Autism, our award-winning program for music on the fly, which recognizes and brings in local music talent into the airport to play while we have passengers. Paws for Passengers, it's a therapy dog program that brings dogs and their volunteers into the airport. Continued our Blue Ridge Honor flights, that recognizes the World War II Korean and now Vietnam Veterans flights. We also have a student artwork showcase, which highlights 10 Western North Carolina schools and their artwork that some of the children have done. And of course, our members of the Authority participate in the United Way Day of Impact. From financials, from our financial standpoint, our operating revenue, year ended July 31st, 2017, was $10.7 million in revenue. Operating expenses was $8.4 million, bringing us roughly $2.3 million back to our fund balance, which we put back in two capital projects. From an asset standpoint, we have $128.9 million, which was up $14.3 million from the previous year. And lastly, the FAA did recognize us in June of last year as our sole sponsor and owner of the airport, and all of the property was deeded over from City of Asheville to the Greater Asheville Regional Airport. So we are truly an independent authority operating within the state of North Carolina. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the Commissioners may have. Thank you.
Yeah, I've just got a comment, one thanks for the great work in the last, well, all the time you've been there, but in the last few years, the expanding of the non-stop flights. Did you mention Denver?
No, my report's based on last year, but Denver does start May 16th, so we are totally thrilled with that one. It will be our most Western flight that we have non-stop out of here. We're expecting it to be a big boon for the community and for the airport. We're excited about that.
Yeah, it's great. There's a lot of buzz out there about that.
It was something that we've been fighting for, for a long time, and we're finally able to bring it to our community.
Who's the carrier? Who's the-
Allegiant will be flying that, twice a week, starting out, some are seasonal, but we're anticipating with the loads of what we're seeing on those flights, we're expecting Allegiant to continue that year-round.
Most people don't know, but the Allegiant, they run, you know, they run large jets out of the-
They do. And they've modernized their fleet. Basically, out of Asheville, they're flying the Airbus 319 and 320. It's 166 or 176-seat aircraft.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, Nate Pennington, Public Hearing on Zoning Text Amendment.
Okay, good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and Members of the Public. I'm Nathan Pennington, Planning Director here for Buncombe County. We do have a text amendment for you tonight from the zoning ordinance, and we'll get Attorney Frue to advise us on this, but it consists of three parts, so it might be helpful, since they are different sections of the zoning ordinance, to break it into three separate votes. I think that's what we did for the planning board.
I think that would be at the Board's pleasure. It's all in one document, so it can be done either way, but if it makes it easier from your perspective to explain it, I would suggest that.
Yeah, I mean, they're very different topics. I could go through it one at a time, and then we could, it's however you guys want to do it. Any preference?
I'm comfortable.
Do you have a preference?
I mean, it's, they're different, so it'd probably be better. I'd suggest one at a time. It'd be better. Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, so we'll just take it one by one. The first one is Section 78-624. This is just to modernize the zoning ordinance and stay consistent with North Carolina state statutes. Basically, it involves appeals from the decision of the Board of Adjustment to where they go before the court system. And what it does is it adds a .1 after General Statute 153A-345. It's now .345.1. That is the extent of the first text amendment. And do you all want to have your vote per, as we go through each one, or at the end, or what do you advise?
Help us understand that and find it in here. Where is it in the one he's talking about?
Okay, so basically, if you were to look at your document there, this would be right before the off-street parking table. The off-street parking table is 78-658. This is Section 78-624, entitled Appeals from Decision on the Board of Adjustment. And at the very end of that line, it says .1 in red with an underline.
I don't have that.
It's on page two?
It is on page two of eight.
Okay, it's on page two of eight. That's what I was wanting.
And for the Vice Chairman, I mean, if we're going to break this up, you might, you're going to have to, I believe you're going to have to break up public comment for each section as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so a question-
A question on this.
Yeah, a question for Attorney Frue. Okay, this is pages one through eight. Do we have two text amendments in? Okay. We got three text amendments in those eight pages.
That's correct.
Does that matter, Mr. Frue, that they're all in one document, and they're not in three separate documents? Does that complicate our vote?
Well, that's the hitch. I mean, we can run it any way the Board chooses. It is in one document, but I think Mr. Pennington's just trying to explain it, make it easier to explain it doing one by one. So I think perhaps, just as an option, let's just go through each one, one by one, ask for public comment, and then vote once at the end.
Okay, that's fine.
So do you want to go for public comment on this one?
We'll go for public comment, any public comment on this issue. I'm going to. 5:29. Back and back, come on up front.
My only comment would be, if it's a public hearing, and it made absolutely no sense what he's talking about, about the zoning, with numbers and letters representing things to say with a big documentation, on your part, where's the public? Does the public get to know anything about what's going on? Or just a few Commissioners and this man over here, whoever he might seem to be? I wasn't here for this, but it just seems like it's not clear. It should have, if it's a public hearing, super clarity to the public. That's all.
Thank you. Jury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I think the lady makes a good point. The lawyers knows what this is, and I've been here a long time, I don't know what the heck you're doing. I don't know what he's trying to interpret or what he's adding to this. What is the text amendment for? What does it specifically describe? I mean, if it don't make sense to two of us, somebody ain't explaining something, so it'd be nice to have an explanation for it.
Any more public comment? Close public comment at 5:31. Nathan? I think there's two good questions being asked, myself, so can we have a description of where we're going?
Sure. So basically, what this section means is that if someone goes to the Board of Adjustment for a variance, for a conditional use permit, for any type of development they might do- for a variance, for a conditional use permit, for any type of development they might do in the county, if there's an appeal, this simply cross-references the state statute so that we are correctly referencing that in the zoning ordinance. So every time that the General Assembly makes a change, we simply want to keep up with our documentation to correctly reflect what the state's trying to do. That's really all this is trying to do, is just housekeeping for this particular section here. The other two I'm going to describe are going to have a lot more substance and a lot more context when we get into those.
So I have a comment, Vice Chair, on this, that the, this is, it's not unusual for the Commissioners to ask questions, and from time to time, as we are just like everybody else in the room, we might be a little confused, so for clarity purposes, we're going to ask these questions. This, number two, is the one that we're voting on. It is page number two. It is Section 78-624, Appeals from Decision of Board of Adjustment, and it says very simply, Appeals from the Board of Adjustment may be taken to courts pursuant to General Statutes 153A-345. Those numbers don't mean much to me, but what it means is for the public, is if they don't agree with the Board of Adjustments, they have a remedy, and that's what it says, and we're making the correction to be in line with the state statute. Is that correct? So that should make that very crystal clear. And I'll move that that is, that the request is consistent with the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan reasonable in the public interest.
We have a motion and second. Do we have a vote? How many ayes?
Aye.
How many nays?
Seven, six, oh.
Six, oh vote, thank you.
Okay, text amendment number two. This involves Section 78-658B, off-street parking, the minimum parking requirements. It updates the standards for off-street parking requirements. So basically, what we're trying to do is, we have a parking table in the zoning ordinance. So when someone comes to us and they're like, hey, we want to put in a putt-putt golf course, or we want to build a hotel, what we do is we tell them, you need a minimum amount of parking spaces to satisfy the requirement for that development. Well, we've had a parking table in place that has had really no substantive changes since the days of limestone, so it has some things that are fairly obsolete in it. For instance, we had sanitariums, tourist courts, and convalescent homes for the aged. Obviously, terms change. To give you an example of one thing we ran across that was just completely out of place, there was a requirement, some guy was trying to build a putt-putt course on Hendersonville Road, and he needed 300 parking spaces for an 18-hole golf course. Obviously, that didn't make sense for a putt-putt course, so what we try to do is go through this document every once in a while and make sure we modernize, and make sure that it's reasonable, and we have an adequate number of parking spaces for what's proposed to be developed. That's what this, that's what this change does, and what we do is we also built in a provision, if we didn't find a particular use identified in our use table, that we could consult what was called the Planner Advisory Service. It's a booklet put out by the American Planning Association, and it allowed us to look throughout the United States and look at other communities and see what kind of parking they were proposing for a use that might come our way. It is Asheville, it's Buncombe County, and we get some things that are just, you know, you might get yoga and goat farming. You just never know what you're going to get. So that's what this text amendment proposes to do, and that's what you have before you tonight.
Any comment from up here?
I'll have some questions in a minute, but not right now.
Okay. I'm opening up for public comment at 5:36. Any comments from the audience? I'm closing the comments at 5:37. Thank you.
Well, that's a record, Vice Chair. Good job. It is. I think it might be a record. I mean, I think if I, sorry, just a couple of comments, if I can. Okay, so tell me about the American Planning Association, Planning Advisory Service, Report Number 432, which is a long, complicated thing and scares me to death. But one is, is that this is not, this is for Buncombe County. This is not for the City of Asheville.
That's correct.
Correct. So for those that are sitting out there, this is for Buncombe County, and I did look at all the, and for clarity for the public, is if they'll look at these reports, they'll see that there are lines drawn through very clearly what's coming out, and then what's added is written in red. So it is very clear and transparent what's being done. It looked like to me it simplified it, though the list is very long, and I read each one of them, and nothing, you know, scared me in the, but I'd like to know, have we used that before? Are we comfortable with that standard? You know, will it apply? Does it suit Buncombe County and not tailored to cities, et cetera? Can you comment on that?
That's correct. So I also want to mention that another thing we did was we actually alphabetized the list, which made it a lot easier. We have a minimum requirement, we're not prescribing a maximum requirement of spaces, so that gives us the flexibility we need. And the report that you mentioned is used across the country in multiple jurisdictions, not just urban but rural. So what it does is it gives you the flexibility to look beyond just that urban realm and go out and look at counties, particular ones that have rural influence as well. And it's especially helpful to planners when we run across the uses, like the example that I used, when it's just something so off the wall that we really need a little help and something to fall back on if we need to.
One of the things that I liked about the changes is that when it came to housing, it did not break out every possible description of housing, you know, what it did what, and it was residential dwelling, so it included whether it's single-family, you know, two-family, manufactured homes, or whatever, just one line, which I thought was great.
That's right. There's no, there's really no need to keep some of the practices that we've seen in the past. The goal is just to simplify and make it easier when we can.
Any more questions from the Board? Would we have a motion?
I think you're saying, I think you're saying that it's, the rest, request is consistent with County Comprehensive Land Use Plan reasonable in the public interest? I did. Y'all may think I'm very smart, I'm not. I got it written down here on a piece of paper.
I finally saw that you got a cheat sheet.
Yeah, I did that a long time ago. Y'all got to get you one of them. Makes you look like a genius. Thank you.
No, Roberts, that's Roberts.
Yeah. Okay, do they have ayes? How many ayes?
Aye.
How many nays? It passes six, oh. Okay, let's go to number three.
Okay, the third and final text amendment deals with Section 78-677D. This is under the procedure for obtaining a conditional use permit, development plan submission, and to add a requirement for a traffic impact analysis. And to give you frame of reference for where we are, if you will go to Section 78-677 on page seven of your document, under Division Six, Conditional Uses, at the end of the parking table, you will see number 12 in red with the underline for the text that has been added. And I will move on to explain the nature of the request. The text amendment itself adds a traffic impact study requirement for conditional use applications in excess of 75 dwelling units. We're not specifying what needs to be included, but we, it will need to be completed by a licensed traffic engineer in the state of North Carolina. So this is for larger projects, multi-family, ones that require conditional use permit and review by the Board of Adjustment, and we're saying it must be included as part of the application submittal, and it will be forwarded to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We're seeing an increase in the number of developments in Buncombe County, especially those that are large-scale and multi-family in nature. Why are we doing this? Well, we're seeing multiple applications that's actually been continued by the Board of Adjustment. This document can provide additional tools in helping our volunteer Board of Adjustment make informed decisions in an often contentious environment. It provides guidance and recommendations as it relates to the North Carolina Department of Transportation required on and off-site traffic improvements. We often see ones that may require deceleration lane, a traffic light, or some type of improvement that's necessary to allow the flow of traffic to take place without impeding it when multiple people are trying to enter an apartment complex or exit during the first part of the morning. These can even assist with internal site parking lot access and maneuverability plans, and they can also work to address community traffic concerns, and they're based on scientific research in the study of traffic patterns. They're completed by an independent third-party engineer that's hired by the developer, and then will be reviewed by the Department of Transportation. That is the extent of the request and the text amendment before you tonight. The Planning Board did approve this amendment on February the 19th, as well as the other two portions that we previously went through, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
I'll have something later.
Go ahead. Anybody have a question?
Not right now.
Question I have on it. When we look at 75 units, and we're talking about the average cost of this is what, around $12,000?
They can range. Some on the low end could be that, and they can certainly increase in cost when you're talking about a development of 300 to 500 units.
Right. You know, my concern is, if we start talking about affordable housing, this could have an effect. Now, 75 is low. You know, I would say more like 100 or more, yes. That would be a concern I would have, because regardless of how we look at it, these costs are going to be passed on, you know, for that. Did you have any discussion on that?
We did. If you want to think in context of $12,000, could be the cost of a new roof. We also tried to come up with a reasonable threshold. 75 is what we put here before you tonight. You're certainly more than welcome to advise us on what you think that threshold should be, but as staff, that's what we're presenting as the number, based on a review of the applications that we've seen, and just looking generally across the board. Some, we don't want to go obviously too low, because that would impact some of our smaller developments that tend to be more affordable in nature. I will say this, many of the applications are actually, and many of the applicants are actually going ahead and proactively submitting a traffic impact analysis without being required. And the reason being is if you get a room full of folks from the neighborhood that are upset about development, they've already got that done, and they can say, look, we've already taken this step, we've shown no negative impacts from our development. So what we're seeing, and if you use the Board of Adjustment as a barometer, we're already seeing this take place where the Board of Adjustment just doesn't feel comfortable approving these, and they're sending applicants back and saying, we need you to do this before we're even going to take up your application.
So a question, thank you, Commissioner Whitesides for bringing that up. Question for Mr. Frew, can we change the number on this if we choose to do so tonight?
I was just fishing around for the advertisement. The advertisement.
Can we amend it?
Agenda is as written as 75. I'd have to see the advertisement. If it said 75, then I think the, we'd have to send it back and have this heard another day.
So if, so I'm inclined with my fellow Commissioner here that the number is too low, so does that mean that we would need to vote tonight to not do, and send it back with a recommendation of a higher number? Is that how we do it?
Having all the information, I think that's a safe bet. I mean, it would just set you back maybe 30, 30 or 45 days for the Planning Board staff to review.
I have a question. How did you get to 75?
We looked at our applications and the trend lines we were seeing, and that's where we chose this number. Like I said, you don't want to, you don't want to go too low, and I certainly wanted to put that out there. Attorney Frew is correct that you do have to advertise at a specific number, but I wanted to tell you all your options tonight, rather than you just feel like you have to vote on something. It's staff-initiated, so we can definitely take it back to the Planning Board.
So that doesn't create a hardship for you, Doc, then?
No.
Okay.
Well, I agree with that also, that 75 is a low number, and without our Chairman, Brownie, I would like to put it off.
Well, actually, we can, we can still, I don't think what we're talking about is putting it off. We can, we can.
Move, take, send it back.
Yeah, we can send it back for a number, yeah. That's what we've been doing, so.
I think you, I think you're voting to reject it at this time and sending it back.
That's what we did, yeah.
So I think that would be the motion of the Board.
Yeah, that would be the motion. Well, in a little while after they talk, so.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to open up public comment on this.
Yeah.
At 6:47. 5:47. I'm trying to get a little later here. Come on up.
Don't rush it.
Time traveling.
Thank you. Well, I'm trying to get us later, so it looks like we're working.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Friar. My name's Carter Webb, and Commissioners. I'm the President of the Oak Forest Property Owners Association in South Asheville. Our development is right off of Overlook Road. I'm sure you guys remember the development, the proposed development. So the property on Overlook Road is actually in the county, surrounded by a city property. We had a town hall meeting back in June that both Commissioners Belcher and Presley attended, graciously attended the meeting, where we were concerned about a development of about 298 apartments on this steep slope. We were really pushing at that time to have a traffic study put through, and you guys were very gracious and listened, and it sounded like you were not for the project. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm here today to ask you to support this modification, even with the 75 units. When they changed the units, when they modified the project, they went from being an apartment complex to 90 units. And if you've driven down Overlook Road, it's pretty packed. It's pretty crowded. So even with 90 units, 90 homes, it was still going to be an issue. I live on West Ridge Drive. In October of last year, a drunk driver went down my road, going at 60 miles per hour on a 25 mile per hour zone, hit my tree, and flipped over, and caused all sorts of damage. Thankfully, nobody was there. My wife had checked the mail about 30 minutes before that. A neighbor up the street, his, their teenage daughter was driving up shortly, like not even a minute after this guy had done this. Recently, the City of Asheville put in speed bumps, speed humps, which hopefully has helped out. It has helped out, hopefully it will continue to help out. But I do think that having a traffic study with 75 units is reasonable, because the majority of these that are coming through are not affordable housing. They're not. The Aiken Road project, there were 298 proposed coming through. They did do a traffic study. The Board of Adjustments requested a traffic study be done. The traffic study came out, this was in December of last year, November of last year, but the residents weren't able to look and review the traffic study. They were only able to look at it the day that the Board of Adjustment voted for it. So I'm here to ask you to approve this. It doesn't sound like you're going to, but I would respectfully ask that you do approve this as it's written. Thank you.
Mr. Rass?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I would like to piggyback on what he just said. I think he's absolutely right. I think it needs to be voted on just like it is. If you stop and think about all these big things that's been happening with these apartments, and there are quite a few being built, and is in the building state, if you think about
that, there's not any more land being grown. There's highways are not getting done quick either. So when you start packing these things up and requiring a hundred and some, a hundred and twenty-five, you're just asking for more problem, because the ones that's already built there and another one comes online, it can be a small one and have a great big impact on what you've already got there. So I think you need to think about the seventy-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Juror. Well, I think the state, does the state-
You need to close it.
I'll close it.
See if there's anybody else.
See if there's anybody else.
Anybody else want to speak? So I'm going to close the public speak at five fifty-two. Thank you. Nate, what does a state requirement say, basically?
So the state requirement can vary. I don't have the particular numbers for the state, because this text amendment, what it sought to do was prescribe what would be a higher standard, and since the county does not maintain any roads like Asheville, the gentleman just up here, he is in a unique position in that there's the city around him, so a lot of the roads he's referencing are in the city, and since the city maintains roads, they have their own standards. So we're in a unique position to where we would have a requirement, and we would basically be forwarding on the study itself to the DOT to review. But they have their own particular thresholds, and I'd have to bring you a more of a detailed report, and potentially could bring Troy Wilson in from the NC DOT, should you instruct us to do that.
I'm really supportive of this. When you talk about community concerns, one of the biggest things is traffic and these apartments, and I appreciate the work you've done, and I'm glad Mr. Webb was here, because this isn't just a number. These are people's lives, and, you know, right now, it's in South Asheville on Hendersonville Road, but it's going crazy, and so to me, I think seventy-five is a good number, and to use the case of things aren't affordable, if you add up how much something costs in putting seventy-five units in, a twelve thousand or even twenty thousand dollar traffic study dwarfs it, and for the impact it has on citizens is stark. So I'm very supportive of this number.
So I've got some more questions. I want to hear more about the seventy, I want to hear more about how you arrived at the seventy-five.
Okay. So like I said, we studied the applications that we've seen going to the Board of Adjustment and really started to refine at what units we were picking up on the public comments. And, well, it's not a lot of units that requires a review by the Board of Adjustment, but we didn't want to set the bar too low, and we also didn't want to set it too high, and so finding that, you know, perfect number, there's no perfect science to it, so, and that's, I think that's why we're having a discussion tonight-
That's right, yeah.
... and ask these questions, and that's why I also didn't want to say, "Well, you know, you got to vote on this." You don't, and we could certainly take it to a higher threshold if you instruct me to do so and take it back to the Planning Board.
So I've heard, and I'm sorry, I'll hush after this. I heard information that I didn't know, which was the ninety unit that was-
Right.
... where it fell in between, and Overlook Road was a project that I was very concerned about, and if I would have had a vote in it, I'd have voted against it very clearly, because of just the location and there needed some, you know, a lot of other information. It just wasn't good for the community, and I would have supported that, the people's right to sell that property. They did, but it just wasn't a good fit for that community, and I think it all worked out. I think the process worked fine. But that one did, do a lot of these projects fall between seventy-five and a hundred?
Depends on what kind of product you're looking at. Let's use Overlook, for example. Over the years, we've seen numerous applications, and they've all never came to fruition-
That's right.
... but, I mean, the site is tricky. It's got topography, so basically, we saw a multifamily product. They also had some issues with, they were going to have to get water there, they were going to have to put in a tank, potentially a pumping station. I don't know about rock. I mean, you know, what's under the surface there, the geotech report, but the other part of this is that one, one version of the project was going to be a single-family subdivision after they pulled back from the multifamily development. Now, a single-family subdivision is a bit different, that that goes, that application goes to the Planning Board. That's another discussion, and we'll have to adjust our numbers accordingly based on what you tell me tonight, because right now, if someone is to submit for a, just single-family subdivision, you would not, as it's currently written, have to submit a traffic study until you get to three hundred units. Three hundred single-family lots. Now, that's different from, obviously, a multifamily-
Wow.
... development.
Good gracious.
But we didn't even have that just a while back, so, you know, this is kind of new for all of us.
Any more questions on this issue? I personally, I've listened to both sides, and I understand, I think, both sides, but seventy-five seems like a weak number. You just throw three hundred out there. Well, seventy-five's a quarter of three hundred. That's what it is. And, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty, I personally just may, I think that if we move it around a little, there's room, but you just don't, you just, I live in a neighborhood that there's forty-two, basically, homes. I never, when I come out in the mornings, I might have one car behind me to get out on the road, sometimes two, but that's it. Everybody don't come out at the same time, so, you know, they go from the top of the mountain down to, I live at the bottom of the mountain. And so it's, I think we're trying to push an issue too far too quick. I personally would like to just relook at this one myself. I mean, and if the other Commissioners agree, that's fine. If they don't, that's okay, too.
Well, you know, after listening to the gentleman from South Asheville, you know, I have to sort of rethink that, because I live in the City of Asheville, where, you know, it's regulated. It's a different ballgame. But when you think of the areas in the county that are next to the city line, and I can see where we could have problems with that, you know, and it's going to be the smaller units, I can understand where the seventy-five, you've come up with that. You know, I was thinking about the areas where it's nothing, you know, more or less, but that is something we need to consider.
And it's tricky. I mean, remember when we had our infrastructure talk? We talked about the urban level areas and the rural level areas, and that, you know, when the Weaverville and Nashville ETJ disappeared and we took over control, that's where we're seeing a lot of the contention, because a lot of times, when you get out in the more rural areas, you lack the infrastructure, so you don't see the density. So, obviously, that's the tricky part. Again, if you set it too high, you're going to pack the room at the Board of Adjustment. So where do you find that middle ground with the seesaw that we looked at at our previous conversation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Planning Board, because it's consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and reasonable-
And in the public interest.
And reasonable to public interest.
I've got, before we get to that, I understand, wait before I go for a second.
Well, you still do call it.
You still do it. We just need to put it on.
But the Overlook deal, what can we do? I mean, Overlook is absolutely one of the most dangerous places that we've probably got in our county right now. We've never had that many people to, you know, verbally come to meetings and speak out about what was happening, tying into Hendersonville Road and Long Shoals Road. It was terrible. But as you get out in different areas, you know, that's what I did. Three hundred, I wasn't aware the number was that high. So, I mean, other Commissioners, you know, would do what's best for everyone, but, you know, seventy-five's low. I think three hundred is very high, and if any of the others want to go along with waiting and getting anything back from the state or seeing if they are something better, you know, a hundred, seventy-five, a hundred's not a big difference, but a hundred to three hundred is a big difference.
So I've got another comment. I think, you know, this is an example for me after hearing from, you know, some additional information and clarity from you, that I don't think the difference between seventy-five and a hundred's worth sending it back, so I'll be supporting it in its current form tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's not a lot of demand.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any more questions?
I also support it as written. I just want to take a second and say thanks to staff. When you presented to us about infrastructure, you talked about that seesaw-
Right.
... and this seems like a great example of staff having worked really hard to come up with a recommendation that helps that seesaw balance for a second, so thank you.
And we'll have to rebalance the seesaw again based on what you tell me tonight, because we'll have to equalize the subdivision, which is, you're right, high right now, but that was done at a time when we had nothing.
Right.
Don't get ahead of us. Don't get ahead of us.
(laughing).
We're just doing this one thing tonight. Don't get way out there.
Don't overdo it.
Yeah, it might be a different result.
Yeah.
So. We've got a motion in a second. Do we have a vote?
We have a motion. But I just want to say, thanks for breaking this up, because it was very good for me to understand, too.
And I think myself, you know, I see where the other Commissioners are at the present time, so I'd say you're probably going to get your vote, but we need to look at the other areas after this one.
Definitely three hundred, yeah.
So, let's try this again. How many ayes?
Aye.
How many nays? It's a six-o vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, you're back again, Nathan. Request for R2 to R3 in Hawkins and two fifty-eight Starnes Cove Road.
Thank you again, Chair, Commissioners, and Members of the Public. Go ahead with the slide. This is a rezoning request for one point seven eight acres located at two fifty-eight Starnes Cove Road, and basically, the request is from R2 to R3. The applicant's seeking to rezone the subject property in order to allow the placement of a manufactured home. The property is currently vacant. It's directly accessed by Starnes Cove Road. Starnes Cove Road is an NC DOT-maintained road. Properties to the north of the subject parcel, they contain a mix of site-built and manufactured homes, and they're zoned R3 as well. Property to the east is vacant and zoned R2, and properties to the west and south are vacant or contain, and contain a mix of site-built homes. The proposed map amendment would not be detrimental to the owners, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding community. It meets a number of the goals outlined in the Buncombe County Land Use Plan. Therefore, it's the recommendation of the Planning and Development Department to approve the rezoning. It's compatible with surrounding properties that are also developed with manufactured homes. It's adjacent to other R3 zone properties. It's located out of the steep slopes, high elevations, moderate or high-slope stability hazard areas, and it's located outside of any identified FEMA flood hazard areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions from up here?
Not right now.
Okay. I'm going to open it to public comment at six oh four. Any public want to speak on this? I should have called it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I want to say that Mr. Hawkins, I've known him for a long time, that owns this property. They've been there a hundred years, you know, but this fits right into my neighborhood. He's backdoor to me. He throws rocks at me, and I throw rocks at him, you know. Good neighbors, and I don't see a thing wrong with this. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any other comments? Close the public comment at six oh six. Any questions? Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I do want to say that this is a community that knows how to live with each other, and that this is an opportunity to put affordable housing in that area. I'm very supportive of it, so, yeah, I find that it's, the request is consistent with the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, reasonable and in the public interest.
We have a motion by Commissioner Belcher, second by Commissioner Frost. Any more discussion? Like to have a vote? Yays?
Aye.
Nays? Six oh. Okay, now we have a quarterly report, financial update from Tim Fleury. We're presenting an update. No action will be taken tonight.
Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, it's my pleasure tonight to start us off with the third-quarter budget update and start the presentation.
Wait, put that clock in that black thing over there with the, thank you, yeah. No, I'm not kidding. That thing is, that thing's jinxed, just got to go. Can I get a second?
Second, that's consistent.
It's reasonable.
That was brought with the gift card.
Yeah.
I'll start over. So it's my pleasure tonight, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, to present the third-quarter budget update. As you can see here, it kind of gives you a snapshot of where we are as of March 31st of this fiscal year. Out of our three hundred thirty point nine million dollar amended budget, we have brought in about two hundred fifty-four million in revenues. You can see from the chart on the left, the majority of those are from our property tax revenues, and then on the right, on the expenditure side, we've spent about two hundred eight point three million. It's about sixty-four percent of our budget, and in the next few slides, I'll go into more detail on these. So property tax revenues are, of course, our largest revenue source. You can kind of see from the trend, we start getting the bulk of those when the bills are sent out, and it peaks when the due date happens in early January. So as of March 31st, we have received almost ninety-eight percent of those revenues. We'll continue to get smaller amounts in throughout the rest of the fiscal year for late payments, and also the motor vehicle tax continues to come in. Then intergovernmental revenues are primarily federal and state revenues. Those do have a lag, because a lot of them are based on, you have to expend the money first, and then you get the revenue in later. We also have some revenues that are only, we only receive one time a year, like the beer and wine tax from the state we get in May. We also get some quarterly revenues that are on a lag, so we get the last one of those in mid-September. So that kind of trend is as expected, what we would think we would, where we would be. Sales tax revenues are on a three-month lag from the state, so you can see here, we've gotten six of the twelve months so far, and we've received almost fifty-three percent, so that is trending a little above budget. And then shifting over to expenditures, the gray bar there is the, represents the budget, and the blue part is the actual expenditures to date as of March 31st. I will say, there's a more detailed analysis of this in the report that's published online, but again, you can see, actually, I think I skipped a revenue. Do we take out the other revenue slide? Yes, sorry. My notes don't match. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything for you. So these expenditures by function, again- again, the gray bar is the budget and the blue is the expenditures. Uh, again, some of that is due to lags in, um, expenses and debt service. We do have some large payments that are, that happened in the fourth quarter. We did also have, uh, the board take some action earlier this year where you use one-time savings to pay cash for some projects versus borrow, so that did help our debt service payments as well. So we do, um, payables post through the end of August in all the departments because when you receive invoices, there, there is a lag on that. So, um, so altogether, I'll say the projection from the last quarterly update has stayed very, um, constant. Uh, when we presented in the last quarter, we were estimating to end about, uh, spending about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in fund balance, and the estimate for this quarter is two hundred sixty thousand, so just a ten thousand dollar change, and that's less than a tenth, one tenth of one percent of our total budget, so, um, kind of a nominal change there. Uh, I will say as we go into the fourth quarter, we still have quite a ways to go when you consider we still get revenues through the middle of September. So as we bring you the fourth quarter report, it'll continue to refine and get more accurate and, um, we'll keep you updated as we, as we continue along. So, um, glad to answer any questions you may have, and again, uh, point out there's, uh, a comprehensive amount of detail in the report online as well if you want more information.
Just one comment on that, the slide that's up. Uh, does the showing education spending is the highest expenditure by function? Um, is my understanding that ends up that way at the end of the year too? Does it, is that, is that accurate? That, uh, the net amount of money spent on education is our highest expenditure in, in the county?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll turn it over to Tim then if you don't have any questions.
Thank you. Your name wasn't on the sheet, but I apologize.
Thank you.
Now that Diane has warmed you up. So, uh, what Diane spoke to is, uh, included in that quarterly financial report that you have, uh, that we made you copies of, and, um, thanks Diane for covering, uh, the budgetary side of that, um, as well. So, you know, we made that commitment back in November that we would provide you these, uh, quarterly updates, uh, which, uh, coincided, uh, with your request for Diane to, uh, Diane and I to come back and, and sort of walk you through our financial condition. And so this, um, I'm pleased to present our, um, second quarterly, quarterly financial report that we have done, and I would like to take the time to, uh, thanks, uh, thank our, our, uh, finance and budget staff for the work that they have put in for this, especially I'd like to thank my finance staff, which is Dustin Clark, Autumn Livers, and Blair Chamberlain, who have, uh, put in several hours of their time getting you this information and getting this information to the public. And as we move forward with these reports, it really is very helpful for us because, uh, it, it really just sort of sets the stage for when we get to the end of the, the, uh, the fiscal year, uh, we'll be, uh, set and ready to go for, uh, the audit, which, uh, we are, uh, I think we are just about getting geared up to start that process here in the next month or so. So, uh, as part of the, uh, quarterly reports, you know, we're, I'll just briefly sort of highlight some of the things that we do, is, you know, it includes the budget overview, um, uh, it has a discussion of, uh, our changes in fund balance. Uh, there is a piece in there, the general fund actials and obligations, which is at the last meeting, we, uh, as part of that electronic payment resolution, uh, there is a requirement for us to, uh, show you what our commitments are, which are our encumbrances, so there is a page in there that complies with, uh, that requirement from last, uh, what we brought to you last meeting. Uh, today, what I would sort of like to do is just sort of highlight some of the big events that went on in the last quarter, and, uh, one of the big events was the fact that we went out for sixty-one point one million dollars of debt, uh, back in March. Uh, this is the first debt issuance we have had, uh, in three years, and so, uh, I think it was significant to, to just talk briefly about that. These are projects that were previously approved over the last, uh, three years, um, and all of these are for, um, school capital projects. So, uh, whether it be the twenty-five million dollar for the major innovations of Asheville High School, or the two million dollars that we're spending on the Kane Creek Middle School roof, uh, or, uh, the, uh, I think it's twelve million dollars for the community high school and a sundry of other paving jobs, major capital expenses. Uh, we did go out, um, and, uh, sixty-one point one million dollars. Uh, all of this, again, just to reiterate, is being paid for our Article thirty-nine sales tax revenue. This is not coming from general fund money. This is, uh, being paid for through the Article thirty-nine sales tax, which is specific to the School Capital Fund Commission. I, I sort of feel like that's an important point, um, to make, um, is that the, those are, um, not property tax dollars that are paying for that, but our, uh, sales tax. Uh, as part of the process, um, of a debt issuance is, part of that process is you do have to go and get your, uh, credit ratings, uh, affirmed, and one of the, the, the exciting things that I would like to just highlight is the fact that, uh, both Moody's, uh, and Standard and Poor's did affirm our triple-A credit rating. And so while this is, uh, a really good indication of the county government's strong financial health, this is also very indicative of the financial health of the community, of the county as well, not just the county government, but the county generally speaking, the economy of the county. And, uh, sort of the, it speaks to the strong institutional framework that, uh, Buncombe County and even Western North Carolina has, and that speaks to, you know, like, the likes of, uh, the city government, Mission Hospital, uh, the strong manufacturing, uh, base that we have. So, uh, I just wanted to, I, I, I think it's just important to highlight the fact that, uh, you know, the credit ratings really are about us and how we manage our fiscal resources and you as the board in, in setting your policies, but it was also, also is really indicative about the economy, um, uh, of the area as well. Just as an update, so with that debt issuance, uh, that does put us at, uh, four hundred and fifty-eight point six million dollars, uh, in our debt portfolio, but I would like to point out that, um, we do have, um, our debt service payment coming up in, um, in June first. The way, the way it works is we have a smaller debt service payment in December, and then we have our large debt service payment in, in June, and, uh, we will be making a thirty-six million dollar debt service payment, um, on June first, and of that twenty-six point four million dollars of that will go to principal, principal retirement. So, uh, while it's, it's, while we're at four hundred fifty-eight million right now, that will go down to about four hundred thirty-two million dollars by the end of the, um, fiscal year. And, uh, you'll just show, the, the, here is just a listing of, uh, just the different, uh, the different, uh, debt issuances that we have out there and, uh, just the balances and maturity dates of those.
Mr. Floyd, can you go back on?
Sure.
Just want to make a comment as I made earlier. Two hundred and sixty-nine million dollars, two hundred and seventy million dollars, fifty-eight percent of that debt is for education.
Yes, thank, that was, I wanted to point that out, so thank you for, for pointing that, that, yes.
You're welcome.
Two hundred, almost two hundred and seventy million dollars of our debt portfolio is for education.
That's, that's funded through sales tax.
Through sales tax. Whether it be, so part of that is also the AB tech, but it is funded through Article thirty-nine and Article forty-six sales tax.
Right, so it's not property tax related, so.
Absolutely.
Which is, which is a big deal. It's a big commitment. It's still a big commitment, but it's also a big commitment on the part of the board, which I appreciate, but it's, it's also, uh, needs to be very clear for the public.
Yes.
Can you go back to the bond rating?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I take this slide to mean a pat on the back, and, um, well, I think a pat on the back is very appropriate for all the measures that senior leadership has done to, um, correct, um, what happened in Buncombe County. We know what happened in Buncombe County. Uh, Wanda Green was on the front page of the newspaper thirty-two times. So, um, I don't want us to pat ourselves on the back for this. Uh, a pat on the back maybe for all the things we've done, so this can never happen again, but, um, the citizens of Buncombe County, their house was robbed, and, um, I take offense at any pat on the back for that.
Noted. And I will point out that, um, those, um, rating agency reports are included as part of your, um, as part of your packet, the quarterly report. One of the things, uh, in regards to debt, I would also like to highlight is that we do have a, uh, debt policy, a policy that, uh, um, that you as a board have approved, which is very consistent with best practices, uh, across the country, um, and, uh, as, um, this is just a slide that sort of indicates the fact that we are in compliance with, with the big major metrics that we have. Uh, and one I would like to point out is just the ten-year payout ratio there at the bottom, which, uh, basically says that sixty-three point two-three percent of our debt service will be retired, uh, within a ten-year period of time. Yes. Briefly, I'd like to just speak about investments. So, right now, we have a hundred and ninety-three point five million dollars in our investment portfolio. That, um, I will say is probably the biggest number, uh, you will ever see in our portfolio. Uh, just happens to be as the, the timing because, again, we have, um, we've just come off of collecting our property tax bills, so, uh, that number will, will start dropping pretty drastically over the next several months. So I just don't want anyone to get the impression that, um, that is, uh, uh, what we normally carry in our debt portfolio. Uh, one of the things, um, I will point out is, uh, we are very secure and safe in our investments. That is per state policy, and so you will not find any of our investments in, um, high-risk, uh, uh, investments, so you will see lots of the, uh, lots of our money sitting in ager- agencies, treasuries, um, and municipals, commercial paper, which are very liquid, uh, products. I can sort of walk you through some of those if you would like, but, um, just rest assured that all of our, um, um, investments are collateralized, uh, and, uh, are very, very secure. And this slide basically just sort of shows our investment priorities are safety, liquidity, and yield, uh, with, uh, safety and liquidity being the, um, two most important of the three. And really, this is very consistent with the requirements of North Carolina. Uh, we were looking at some of our investments from, uh, about a decade ago, and you will see if, if someone were to compare, uh, us from two thousand and six and seven where we had investment income of around five million dollars a year, it's now around a million dollars a year. That is because, uh, the state really was not regulating, uh, how you invested, and so we had lots of higher risk, um, investments then. So I just want to sort of point that out if someone is, is one looking back over trends, because what I will say is, uh, there, if you look to the right, um, because of the, some of our strategies that we've implemented within the last year or so, our investment earnings are actually going up. So we're squeezing every little bit that we can out of, uh, uh, the policy that we have. And those are the, the, the two major highlights of, uh, I, I felt like that I would like to point out for this, so, uh, more than happy to address any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? Tim, thank you very much. Diane, you too. Okay. Going on with agenda, board appointments.
Got a nomination to make, uh, for the airport, uh, re- reappointment of Matthew Burrow.
A second.
Any ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Matthew Burrow, appointed six oh.
I'd like to nominate Benjamin Mitchell for the Historic Resources Commission.
Second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays?
I'd like to nominate Susan Shimer for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
A second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays? Six oh. Okay, all the commissions are done. We got one more.
No, one more.
Excuse me. Right.
Is that, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Ayes?
Yeah, John Allen Bernard for the Rassville Volunteer Fire Department Relief Fund.
Second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays? Six oh vote. Thank you. It is time for public comment. The time limited for individuals' comments to the board is three minutes. If the time expires, you may leave any questions longer with your name, address, phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. The board reserves the right to deny a public address on any subject previously presented to the board during the same meeting. Public comment. Yes, sir, come up. Oh, no, we don't put a time on here.
Folks, my name's Harry Vess. I'm from, uh, Swananoa, North Carolina. I've lived there right at fifty years, been paying property taxes fifty years. I've lived there longer than that. The last time I was here was on Communist Workers Party Day, which is today, May first, two thousand and seven. That's when three county commissioners voted to deny Buncombe County property owners their liberty by denying them the right to vote on zoning. Three county commissioners. There was an election that was coming up in less than thirty days, and they refused to allow the county to decide that issue. And all this evening, I see y'all are working, uh, working your juju there, trying to figure out how you're going to do this and that with somebody else's property. I was in this chamber when a man had twenty acres of land and wanted to put a trailer on it, and the county commissioners denied it to him because somebody with two hundred acres of land didn't want that trailer there. In any event, that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments? Jury?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Member of the Board. Sales tax, property tax, sell of the big old hospital over here for one point eight billion dollars. Ain't that amazing? We're going to get some money now. We were looking for a tax decrease. These fellers presenting this budget tonight and these ladies, um, let me tell you now, when the budget gets bigger than what you're taking in, there's something wrong with that picture, ain't there? Or more than you're taking in, I'm sorry. Well, I'm a positive feller today. We're going to get a tax reduction. You, you listening up there? I mean a big one. Now, I ain't talking about that one penny. I'm talking about five pennies at least, and then after we get to sell the hospital, we're going to come back and get five or six more, maybe more, you know. Just get, these foundations out here, you know, the hospital foundation, can you imagine how much money's going in there? Now, I'm going to give you some things to think about. We can solve our poverty problem. We're talking about government today and how beautiful it is, how much money's coming in, and how much we're going to do, uh, with all this, uh, debt service? Good Lord. Let me tell you something. Think about the poor people now while we're talking, okay? Let's talk about the poor people. Uh, I think Mr. Whiteside would agree with me here. That's the subject, is the poor people. All of us should be. We are the worst in the United States. Go to the, uh, uh, New York Times and read it, twenty sixteen, and you'll find out the poor people here. How did they become poor and the government look so good? The government here has looked good for years and years. Money rolling ever, everywhere. Property taxes, sales taxes, and all. I mean, we couldn't ask for the millions of dollars any better than this county has brought in on the backs of the poor people that can't do nothing for themselves and we're having to take crumbs and give them. I'm tired of seeing the poor people get the raw end of the deal. We need to think about some things for the poor people. Now, talk about education. I want you to think what just been procrastinated, or, you know, projected tonight. All this money for education, where's it coming from? Tax and property tax. What are they doing with it? Think about it. Bricks and mortar. We got beautiful buildings and we don't have the education we need for our kids. It's going to take more than bricks and mortar. I've hammered on this to you for years. We've got the beautiful mansions now. We need to focus on the education where we should have been to start with because the kids on the medium and the low end is getting screwed. have been to start with, 'cause the kids on the medium and the low end is getting screwed by the system, and they're coming in here and talking about what a wonderful job they're doing. Just talk to me, and I'll tell you how bad it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Bonnie Vess. Anyway, I remember when I asked Wanda Green, how much did, uh, Buncombe County use to spend for planning, to think about zoning, and I was given a figure of seventy-five thousand dollars. And then I asked a group of people in the building part of the zoning, that they were, you know, planning on it, what, what it would cost to, um, incorporate zoning in Buncombe County, and I got a completely different figure. So, at that point, I figured that there was a little bit of discrepancy between what actually was spent to try to plan what happened if they had zoning or not. And, um, the infrastructure, in my viewpoint, from living here almost my entire life, is a nightmare. I go to Raleigh, I go to Charlotte, I go to all kind of other places in the state, they have sidewalks, they have a biking, uh, place for people to drive their bicycle down the road, they have parks everywhere, they have wonderful facilities for swimming, which is a real P for me, since fifty years ago, we were out there at Skyland Swimming, and fifty years later, we're still out there at Skyland Swimming. You have aquatic centers in a little city like Lenore, North Carolina, that is, uh, three or four times bigger in budget than what we have. You go out to Huntersville, North Carolina, and you see a multi-million dollar facilities, and it's about the size of, um, North Carolina. You go to Maryland, Ellicock City, and they have a county the same exact size as Buncombe County, and you see fifty parks and places for everyone to exercise, and walk, and swim, and play ball, and have things for the children, and you get fifty-eight percent of your money is going to education, according to the budget. And, I know this is awful, because most people don't agree with this, it's about bounty and soul food, going vegetables to passed out free. So, I said, well, I'd like to know where they're getting the money to pass out free vegetables to anybody that'd like to walk up and get them. Well, nobody knows anywhere in any, uh, the places I called. We don't know, we don't know where they're getting it. Somebody quoted me Buncombe County supplying part of the money, so I said, well, you know, how much are they giving, where's it coming from, et cetera, et cetera. And who gets to decide which produce company gets to supply the money given by facilities to these people who would like to have free vegetables and fruit? And I don't really want anybody not to eat properly, I want everyone to eat right. But I don't want people who can't afford it to get free food, and I don't care if it's mornings at school, afternoons at school, or in, any problem besides that. Sorry, I have about a thousand other things to say, but I don't have time, but just hearing any meeting, they throw in two hundred and ninety-three million, but, you know, that's not very much.
Sorry, ma'am, your time's up.
I know, I heard. Thank you so much for your time, once more.
Any other comments? Announcements. May the eighth, eleven AM, Commissioners will hold a special closed session on NCGS one forty-six, three eighteen, eleven A six, to consider a personnel matter at two hundred College Street, room three twenty-six. On May eighth, at twelve thirty, Commissioners will hold a work session to hear budgeting presentations. The work session will be held on the first floor, room two hundred, College Street, and two hundred College Suite downstairs, Asheville. On May the fifteenth, Commissioners' regular meeting at two hundred College Street, room three twenty-six. Mr. Frue, do we have any need for closed session?
Not today.
Thank you, sir. So, basically, I'm gonna close this meeting. Say, I move adjourn? Ayes? Yes? Still got a second? Yes, so many, and a second. Aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Have a great evening, everyone.